The one thing I just wanted to ask is that my dad lives off, you know, like 163rd and Normandy. As I drive through his neighborhood, I see there's plenty of houses that are either foreclosed on or up for sale and, you know, having a hard time being sold. I just wondered, was there any, really, any consideration about how the new housing would have any effect on already struggling homes that are being very, that they're having a struggling time selling those homes? The new influx of housing, would that just make an oversaturation of the marketplace? But it's more about counting more than anything else.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Neil Gonzalez. I've lived in Tinley for just about four years now, because I really wanted to live in Tinley Park. I am a teacher. I teach at-risk youth, so I know all about your lunch program that you're trying to sell and all of that. You marketed it towards new teachers. I don't know if you've looked around at the local schools, but there's not any job openings, first off. You're marketing it towards rookie police officers. There's not any job openings at Tinley Park Police Department, as far as I know. So I don't know who you're marketing it towards, but let me tell you, I wanted to live in Tinley Park so bad that I bought one of the foreclosed homes that a gentleman before spoke about. My wife and I, between us, have five jobs. Okay? Five jobs to live here. Okay? To make above your median income. To make above your median income, I don't get home until nine o'clock at night. My wife works on the weekends to make above your median income, because we really wanted to raise our families here in Tinley. So if you're saying that it can't be done, I'm living proof that it can be done. And if you want to do it, you can do it. That's all I really wanted to say. I'm not the only one, because people are still at work right now, to live in Tinley Park.
Thank you.
I'm Charlie Smith, and I've lived in Tinley Park for 64 years.
Yeah. Top number.
You win so far, Charlie.
And Dawn, my wife, has lived here 74 years, so I think we get the travel trophy or age trophy, so far. I know Ed was up here. I don't know what the benefit of the legacy ordinance is, or law, or what have you. Who benefits from that? It takes we, the people, out of a very important document if not only us, we're excluded, but you, the trustees that we have public trust in. And the other thing is, second thing, is that I resent a company from Ohio to come to our community to meet our needs. If you know the history of this community, we meet the needs. We have a human resources commission that was started by the trustees. And if there's needs, they address those needs. We have a great organization that meet the needs of low-income people that are on hard times. It's called Together We Cope. It was voted the best non-for-profit in the area. So they know what our needs are. I don't need Ohio to tell us what our needs. The history of Tinley Park is unique. We were the home of Howe Development Center, served 480 people with disabilities, developmental disabilities. We were the home on 183rd and Harlem of Tinley Park Mental Health Center, mentally ill people. People were admitted through court order who were dangerous to themselves or other people. That's the legal definition of mental illness. You could go there and volunteer, but if a court action would place you there. We welcomed them, and that was several years ago. It's closed because the state can't afford that type of operation. Howe Development closed. It was $240,000 a year to house a person at Howe Developmental Center. We have an agency that provides residential housing for those people that left Howe. And we get $50,000 from the state. Half of it is matched by Medicaid waiver. If we go to that campus and look across that campus, we have a facility for domestic abuse people. And there were four communities that turned them down, and our mayor said, "Come to Tinley." It's a little emotional for me. But we provide services for more than Tinley residents from 38 communities in that program. I had a non-for-profit agency in Tinley Park. It's still there. I resigned about three years ago. But the village of Tinley Park donated that land to us, and they identified with the needs of people with developmental disabilities. And that agency is involved in 36 residential opportunities for people throughout the state of Illinois, starts in Tinley, goes all the way to Illinois. And I can go on and on about meeting the needs of our people. I don't see anybody sitting on our sidewalks asking for money. And I resent somebody from Ohio telling me and this village that we are not meeting the needs of our people.
Thank you, Charlie.
Hi, my name is Joe Shorick. I live at 17846 South Highland. I've lived there. I bought my house from my father in 2005, but back in '78, I helped my dad build the house. So my roots go back in Tinley Park. Up to now, I've been very pleased with the way you guys have been running our village. We, you know, everybody here voted for you guys. We put you in. Alls I'm asking is that you guys do the right thing and don't let this happen. We do not need buildings like this in our community. If we need to help people, you can help people with programs to put them in apartments that are already there. But please, don't let this go through. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Beth McKernan. Been living here for 19 years. Super quick, we heard from two of the trustees right off the bat where they stood on this. Can we hear from the rest of you? Are you yea or nay on this? The ones that didn't speak up in the very beginning?
It's not what I envisioned for 183rd and Oak Park Avenue.
Do, are you in for, you're, do you?
I'm against it.
Okay.
I'll be on this board for six months and two days, okay? My experience in this boardroom before that was at that microphone, okay? Whenever I would speak at that microphone, I would wonder whether I was heard or whether I was listened to, okay? I have learned in the last six months that the people on this board listen and they hear. And that's what I'm going to tell you right now. Thank you.
So is that, yes or no? I, we're under a time restriction, I understand, so like, just really quick.
I just told you, I listen and I'm hearing you. What do you want?
But if you had to vote on this, is it a yea or a nay?
I'm not going to answer that question. I'm going to listen.
All right, thank, okay, that's fine, okay?
Clerk doesn't.
Was it?
See, I don't vote on these things.
Okay, who, who's here?
First of all, I'm trusting, Ma, I've been on the board 18 years. I don't think it's as simple as...
Somebody asked me if I live here?
I said, "But you do, you live here, so you have got an opinion, right?"
Sure.
If this went to a vote, that's what I want to know. Who, who would vote on this to make it happen or not?
I never told you my vote. I'm trying to get a vote. That's, that's what I'm upset about.
I'm just, we're just trying to figure out who's, who's for the people and who's not.
First of all, the way, the way you couch the question is unfair. This, this has not come before us, because under the proposal, it meets all the requirements of our zoning code. Our attorney, our attorney has counseled us that that's why we don't get to vote on it. Am I in favor of the project? I can take it or leave it. It's not something that, that I feel I can dictate to everyone who comes in here, who brings a project that fits our codes, that complies with all the codes, with no requirements for variances of any sort. We don't have the right to tell them they can't build here any more than we have the right to tell anybody else they can't build here, just because they want to build something for low-income people.
In the best interest of the people of Tinley Park, would you vote yes or no?
I don't have an opportunity to vote right now. We'll see if I have that.
I'm just saying, hypothetical situation. Yes or no?
Under the current proposal, I would vote yes, because I do not want to buy a lawsuit for discrimination for this village board.
So for the rest of the day, you have to answer, like, real quick, yes or no is fine, good, too. So who else would get to vote on this?
Me.
Okay.
I don't like the fact that you're standing there and telling us that we don't have a feeling one way or another for this, for this town, okay? We sat and listened to everybody. A few people, a few people misspoke, but that's fine. You know, that's what we're up here for. But the fact of the matter is, we don't have a say in this. We do not have a yea or a nay in this.
I understand, I understand that the people here that elected you want to know if you had that chance, this, in that hypothetical situation.
Ma'am, he was speaking. He was speaking. Would you allow him to finish, please?
But he's misunderstanding my question.
No, he was speaking, and he wasn't done speaking.
No, they were dancing. You're all dancing.
And you started, just like you're talking over me, he was speaking, and you're talking over me.
You danced around it as well.
So please let the gentleman speak.
I think I had the microphone first.
Well, let's, 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 let's just, you ask, ask a question. TJ, did you have any more to say?
No, I don't have any more to say.
Okay. And you, Mayor, how do you feel? Again, hypothetical, if you had to vote on this, yes or no?
Since, since the only way I could vote is if there were a 3-3 vote in this case, as of this day, I couldn't tell you.
Oh.
No, 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 wait, 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 wait.
Need more time.
No, it's, it's, it's time. I'll tell you what, there's been a number of facts that have come before us tonight that, that bear some consideration and some thought. It's facts that I didn't have before tonight, okay?
Which is how we feel as a community also.
Well, and that's, that's why I couldn't stay, because I'll tell you what, if I got more facts tomorrow, I might change what I said to you today, so I'm not going to make stuff up just to make you happy.
And I can, no, and I appreciate that.
And I'm not going to make stuff up just to make you mad either, because that, that serves no purpose. I think everybody on this board, everybody, whether we're of the same political stripe or not, is here for you, okay? You are our first priority. Now, this developer has come in with a proposal. As it stands today, the body that makes that call has not decided yet. So rather than making assumptions as to how they're going to call it, or how they're not going to call it, let them get more information as well, so they can make the right decision for the village of Tinley Park.
But it's my, it's my understa, it's my understanding that the planning committee is the one who's going to vote on this Thursday.
The Plan Commission.
Planning Commission.
That is not Trustee Vandenberg. That is not Amy Connolly.
And who, who is that?
They are volunteers, just like you, that will be in attendance on Thursday night to hear this.
Do, are there any names, do you have any names that we have some familiarity with who they are? Does anybody know who they are?
Well, yeah, I mean, they're members of the community, just like you all are.
If you check the website, you'll see.
They're volun, they're unpaid volunteers. I don't have the list of...
So unpaid volunteers are determining the future of our community.
Ma'am, to answer your question fully, ma'am, to answer your question fully, who the people are, the list of the names are listed on the website.
But I wonder what, so what do we look for specifically?
Who is... Underneath commissions, there's...
Can I get on the list? Can I get on that?
Absolutely. Submit your letter to the mayor's office, as the rest of, everybody could submit something. That's not a problem.
But what's the title? Like, what are these, what's, what are these people's titles that...
They're listed as commissioners.
...wanted to get on board? What is it? I'm sorry.
They're listed as commissioners.
Commissions?
Commissioners, planning, commission.
Long-range planning commission, I think, is the, the title that you'll see out there.
And so what's the process of getting on this long range?
Thursday, 7:30?
7:30, and where's the meeting held at?
In the Carlson Center, where the other group is.
No, that's not true. The meeting is held, the meeting is held in council chambers, which is directly here.
Is it open to the public?
Yes. Every commission meeting is open to the public.
7:30, Thursday, here, here.
Okay, my last thing, Mr. Petroni?
Just, again, I wanted to make it clear, I'm asking that that meeting and any action be held until we get a legal opinion. I don't think taking away elected officials' vote on issues that affect the community passes legal muster. I want an independent firm to look at this before they can vote.
Well, Beth, Beth, keep, keep in mind that they, in certain roles that they perform, just as when Mr. Bard was talking about zoning board, they make recommendations, in most cases, to the board who then votes. It's just because of the way that this was written that the board doesn't get a chance to either accept or reject.
Does the board's authority supersede? Can you pass a motion tonight so that it doesn't get passed on business?
I don't believe that's within our authority. That is not, I mean, I'll defer to counsel.
I disagree.
I'll defer to counsel.
This board can amend the zoning ordinance any way it wants to amend the zoning ordinance, just like when it created the legacy code in 2011, that's how it wanted it to be. So if you want to do that, you can. But in order to amend the zoning ordinance, you have to have a public hearing first, and then you would have two readings of ordinance before this board. And that's typically preceded by some committee discussion, so...
Okay, so I think we need to initiate that, then, whoever gets, get started, because we can't have this happen. So my last thing, Mr. Petroni, first, when you came in, you said that you did not, it was no warm welcome. You had conversations with people who weren't going to be directly affected by your coming in and putting this, this housing unit in. You need to reconsider your location, because we don't need it. We don't want it. The vast majority of us don't want it. We don't need it, and you can't ignore us. We're the majority. We're the majority. So whatever it takes to make this not happen, especially voting, the people need to be heard, the people need to be listened to. We're all blindsided by this. We need more time to figure out how to make this, in my opinion, not happen. But yeah, you need to listen to people. We don't need it, don't want it. So maybe there's another community that you can pursue that would welcome it, because we don't need it, don't want it.
Back in Ohio.
Yeah. Well, no, do you see the list? I mean, there's tons of, now they're stretching out to Indiana, they're coming to Illinois. Have you maxed out Ohio? You know, go elsewhere. We don't need you here. Thank you very much, but no thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
Before anything else is said, as we're on the subject, can we move to make a motion to table the vote on Thursday?
No, you can't. This body does not have that authority.
Okay.
Thank you. There's another question. This body does not have that authority. If you want to go to the Long Range Plant Commission, voice your commission to them. That is your prerogative. Those are open meetings, as was discussed earlier. You are more than welcome, as are all residents, to attend that meeting.
I disagree. I believe we do have the authority.
Well...
I asked to put it on the, on the agenda for tonight. I think I asked for that on Friday or Saturday. I, again, am asking that we suspend anything until we get a vote. It's wrong to take away my vote, his vote, his vote, and their vote.
Dan Wright.
Hi, Tony Costello, 17131, Shetland Drive. Thank you for your time, patiently waiting back there. Obviously, this is a scrunelled crowd. So what I heard out of the whole night is that there's two root causes. One being the legacy code, which you guys have addressed, that you're going to look into, which is great. So, you know, next steps, I don't know, maybe by next board meeting, we can get an estimated time of resolution on how long it's going to take to revise that legacy code. But two is the plant commission. And I don't want to get down on any volunteers, but there are a lot of rumors going around about residency requirements, and possibly some may not be residents of Tinley Park. I don't know. There's a lot of talk going on around this. So I'm hoping that the board can look into the residency requirement for all of the plant commission, as well as how long they've been on the commission, how they were selected, open up the, the whole investigation. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kristen Thery, and I live at 16706 Anne Marie Drive. I've lived in Tinley Park for 11 years now. As Clerk Ray knows, my husband and I willingly volunteered our time for the Tinley Park Fine Arts Festival, and we're very enthusiastic at the prospect of living here. But at this point, we're paying over $10,000 in taxes while our property value continues to plummet, and we're feeling trapped. I am a teacher with, with at-risk students as well, so I understand how this works, and I do support affordable housing. For me, the issue isn't coding. The issue isn't really with the developer, although I understand those concerns. For me, the issue is that we were left out of the equation, and I think the Tinley Park Exchange would have been a perfect medium for that. I'd also like to say it's incumbent on us as citizens and village residents to hold these gentlemen accountable and to ensure that this does not happen again.
John Devock, 17416, 71st Avenue. Mr. Seaman, this is for you guys and the old regime that used to run this place. I, I mean, how can you guys sit there and not really cast a vote, or say which way you're going to go? We're the people that are voting for you guys, and you think that I'm dis, and that we're disrespecting you? You sitting back in that chair like you don't care what we think, and the same with you, that you don't care what we think, doesn't make any sense. We put, we put our trust in you guys. We did. We put our trust in you guys, especially you, Mr. Seaman. We put our trust in you, and you're, you're not doing it the right way. You're really not. And when I'm sitting here, and you, you're going to town, don't look at him. Look at me. I'm talking to you. I'm having respect for you, okay?
Thank you.
Exactly. That's all I got to say. You guys are wrong.
Dave, may I comment?
And I just called for it.
Please. Sir, it's, never mind. Never mind.
Any other statements? You've been raising your hand for quite a bit, please.
Hi, my name is Carol Ernest. I've been a resident for 32 years. I think what has most of the people this upset is the fact that we just found out about this a week ago. If this was such a great idea and was going to benefit the residents so much, why haven't we heard anything? I'm asking you, Mayor, why? And why you keep saying, "Well, we don't have the authority, the planning commission." Why would you give your power to a planning commission and wash your hands of it, saying, "Well, we can't," sorry?
No.
He's asking for a motion. "Well, we can't do that." What can you do, Mayor?
Well...
That's what I want to know. What are you going to do for us?
I'll tell you. I'll tell you what we can do.
What?
What we can do. That means the board, everybody sitting up here, not just me.
Okay.
That means taking that code that wasn't this planning director's document, all right? There were, this was the product and the result of probably one to two years' worth of effort to try to build a form-based code that would be specific to developers. Now, you might say, "They made a mistake in the code. They shouldn't have done that. They shouldn't have done this." But the idea was to be able to get Oak Park Avenue in motion, get something happening there. You got a bunch of people sitting in this room already that have already complained about how nothing's happening there. We're trying, that was the first effort to try to make something happen there, where a developer could come knocking on our door and basically say, "This is what you got to do. Do it, and you can build it."
At the beginning of the meeting, you said, in regards to the roundabout, that was part of the legacy code. They voted it down. We all knew about the roundabout, just like we got the postcard this, last week in the mail. Come, plan your future for the grounds of the Tinley Park Mental Center. You want our input.
Yes, we do.
You care about us. How come no one knew about this? Had it not been for this group? You guys were hoping to slide this right through, and you know it. I don't trust anybody anymore. I don't. You do know, you did know. As a matter of fact, the front page of your fact sheet states, "We are comparing the reserve to Bremen Town Manor, low-income seniors." I looked at the Illinois Housing Authority Act. In 2015, the, the reserve received second approval, and under population category, it says non-elderly. Did, no one checked into this?
No, we knew it was not elderly restricted.
Then why did you put on the fact sheet, on the first page, that we are comparing this to the reserve, to Bremen Town Manor? No, you're not.
Because that was the first low-income subsidized facility.
You led people to believe it would be for seniors.
Let me ask you this. Do you think Bremen Town Manor was unopposed when that came in?
So is that what this is all about?
No, 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 it is not what it's about, but you're, you're criticizing a comparative, and I'm saying, they are a comparative.
I'm criticizing the fact, you're wondering why everyone is so upset. We found out about it a week ago.
There was another facility...
And now everybody's, well, you know, you're all passing the buck.
Nobody's passing any buck.
Yes, you are.
Dave?
You're not answering the questions. Okay, we have been kept uninformed. And again, if this was so wonderful for Tinley Park, it would have been on the front page of the Chicago Tribune. Your little article didn't even make it. It was on, in the South Town. Most of the residents do not receive the South Town. They can't afford it.
Bernie, did you have a comment?
Yes. One of the things that I keep hearing, obviously, is that this legacy code was snuck in, and the legacy plan was, and all this kind of stuff. I would like, I would...
No, it's not what was said.
That's what everyone says, okay? Am I allowed to speak? Am I allowed to speak? Am I allowed to speak? I have sat here and listened, okay? And now I would like to speak without being interrupted, okay? And everyone is talking about the legacy code and how this was modified and changed and everything else, okay? On our website is the legacy plan. That is a specific document. And if you look at this particular legacy plan, and you look at the pictures in there, you will see that there are pictures where the legacy plan was laid out at Central Middle School. You'll also see a picture in there where the residents were in there reviewing the legacy plan at the train station. And you'll see another picture in there where the legacy plan was being reviewed at another public place. This particular legacy plan was, in fact, presented to every single one of you, every single one of you. There are pictures...
With no mention of affordable housing being snuck under the radar. Sorry.
Again, am I allowed to speak?
Sorry. We're not stupid. You are not dealing with unintelligent people here.
So, I'm, I'm done talking.
The last thing that I would like to say, Trustee Pino, are we, let's do the motion.
I believe we need 72 hours' notice. In case we don't, I'd move that we put on hold, get an independent legal review of the legacy code that takes away my right to vote on projects that affect my community and the citizens that elected me. Right ahead to second.
That is not on the agenda, but I can tell you...
Okay, who's going to second that motion?
It doesn't matter, because it can't go anywhere. But what we can do is give staff direction at this meeting to investigate what Trustee Pino has suggested, so that we can at least get it rolling, which I think is everybody's concern.
I'd ask for independent attorney review.
We can give staff direction to, to identify independent counsel to do just that.
The plant commission meeting is Thursday.
Yeah, that's the right...
Ma'am?
It's less than 48 hours.
Miss?
We don't have time.
Miss, if I may?
Because, again, no one, we, we didn't know about this.
And why didn't we know? And why didn't we know?
Yeah, why didn't we know?
To try to follow the law the best that this board can, I think that it would be more responsible for us, particularly me, as chairman of the Planning and Zoning Committee, to talk to the commissioners, see if they could possibly table the item on Thursday to allow this board and staff to follow through with what Trustee Panito was asking.
Okay.
So I would much prefer to try to keep it as legal as possible.
I would too.
And I think that, I think that the direction of the mayor and our counselor, that's the way we're going to do it.
Thank you.
Okay, we have another session to go into after this. We've got an executive session that's been on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask, can I make a statement to the board really quick?
Certainly.
I think this would, I've been sitting here listening for two hours, and I got to tell you, I've learned a lot of stuff, and I really appreciate everybody coming out and saying these things because it's something that we all hear and it's something that we're all thinking as well. So that being said, I'm asking this board if they could create a community committee with a designated spokesperson from one of the residents to continue this conversation, make it a town hall style, have some input, have some elected officials, if they're available, come and meet with you, continue this dialogue. Because I think, it was already stated, somebody had said something along the lines of, we're being, we were elected to sit here and listen. Well, I agree wholeheartedly. We're creeping into a late hour. There is more business this board has to discuss this evening. I want to continue this conversation, but I want to do it in a more civil and formal manner, if that's okay? I think this board in the past has created some type of community committee. I don't see this being any other option at this point.
Well, what we can do is, I think in the past what we've done is identify, and maybe it's Mr. Coughlin because he's kind of sponsored this item on the agenda. He could perhaps be the coordinator of information. I think you've got access to emails and everything else to keep everybody informed. We have felt strongly, at least some of us, that, I think the board at large, that more community forums are necessary, that the best way to keep the lines of communication going is to meet with more frequency with you. And that in, these are difficult sessions because there's a room that's of limited space. If we were to do this, you know, more informally at a high school or something, it makes it a little easier to come, talk, chat, listen, and ask some of the questions because not everything you see on the agenda is what's going on in the village because there's a lot of things going on in the village. This is a big place. It's got a lot of stuff going on all the time. And it's not like you all don't know about it. Some of us don't know about it either, and that's not because people are trying to be clandestine. It's just the nature of what it is that you do when there's lots of things happening on at one time. So, you know, if you feel that you've not been informed, you know, for that, I'll apologize.
I'd like to make one other statement to the residents. There was a campaign, there were promises made, folks. We talked about community involvement. That was one. Town hall meetings was two, okay? Three trustees came here. We discussed it in our first month, okay? This decision that I'm talking about right now is not just stemming from this particular project. This is a small issue compared to the larger issue. You've all addressed it. Communication is integral, okay? Transparency. Everybody on this board, we're willing to do it. We want to do it, okay? And then my second point today. This is the first televised board meeting this town's ever had, okay? That, my friends, is open transparency. So continue this movement. Let's keep it going.
Mr. Petroni?
Petroni, thank you, sir. You know, I really have to... So as we've talked about timelines and process as it relates to the investment that we've made to be in front of you this evening, the action of, any action in that would be outside of your process seems that it would be suspect. And my concern would be that with regards to your prescribed process for plan approvals, that any deviation from that prescribed process would be suspect. Given the fact that we have precisely complied, so out of deference to the process, I would respectfully request that that process remain intact and whole with no interference other than public communication, which is allowed, of course. This is all public. Your Planning Commission meetings are published.
Get him the money back, get him the hell out.
So as we have invested hundreds of thousands of dollars through your process, we will respectfully request that you honor your legally published process.
Is that a threat?
And we respectfully request that that process be honored because we meet precise compliance. Thank you.
Be there Thursday. That's the process.
Mr. Seaman, Mayor Seaman, the one thing I do want noted by the trustees is that the civil servants who are employees of our town put us in this position. I am a business owner, and I have accountability in my business. Someone needs to be held accountable for the dilemma they've created and the lack of trust that now exists between you and us. Because I will tell you, there's none. There's people sitting at the table because they failed in economic development to recruit and retain viable businesses. They failed to bring people here that would spend money to be part of our downtown. We lowered the bar. Someone had a personal agenda to get their building built, their plan executed on. They went with their own personal agenda. And someone needs to be held accountable coming out of this meeting.
Okay, there is then a motion. Next is to move to executive session. The reasons have been stated. Is there a, you've got to restate the...
Yes.
All right.
Restate my motion?
Yes.
Restate the purpose.
Sure.
Motion to executive session. Is there such a motion?
It's stated previously.
Is there a motion?
The motion's been moved before.
Seconded.
Would you like me to read the purpose second?
Now you can read, yes.
Moving into executive session for the purpose to follow, the appointment employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for he/they employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call on motion to executive session, Trustee Maher.
Yea.
Trustee Grady.
Yea.
Trustee Panito.
Yes.
Trustee Vannenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Yunker.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carried. We are moving to executive session. No announcements are expected. They're out.